All right, we knew what you meant this. All right, then. So I will call the meeting to order. We have a forum here. We do not have any remote participants. We do not have any members of the public here. Do we have anyone online who has signed up? All right. We're going to fly through the three minutes. We're a little sparse and we're going to bulk those up a little bit. So we're going to pass the minutes by for next one. So financial report. You have the financial report. Indy is not on. Is it? I don't know if you have any comments you want to make on it?
Thanks. We had it. We're going to get into payments for the wine implementation grant and the end of this quarter are both like go Virginia matches. We're going to get those paid paid out. And then at the top, you'll notice everyone but Centura has officially paid their bond admin fees for the year. Okay, so there's some income for the EDA. And I think that's the only major changes from last time.
Any questions, comments? All right. Unfinished business. I'll just report that Emily, Jeff and I met with Ed Rogers Bonimos and we will be recording any of that. So on to new business. Strategic plan work session led by me and Emily. I will hand it off to Emily.
Isn't that the way leadership works?
Yeah. Oh, I did.
Heard that. It's like you said, B and. My folder. Strategic plan, yeah.
Did we get an actual folder and not a?
Board of supervisors members can.
Get an actual, oh, how about that?
Only black and white for us. Yeah, so the board, so the board packet, which we sent a link to you all as part of your agenda packet, the board packet has all of the technical appendices that will comprise the final report. And so B has a printed copy of all of the technical appendices as well. So hers is quite bigger than yours.
You're going to need all kiln trees for that.
Yeah, we tried to be a little more, a little more discerning, but it's a big document and it's so it's hard to read all that online. And also I hope that you return to it again. So we thought it was worth the print.
Either way, it's hard to read offline too.
Yes, ma'am.
You gotta come with, because I've seen the performance agreements, agenda, financial report and the email you sent. It was in a separate, it's funny, I don't see it.
He was in it separately from.
The, the, hers is thicker because the, the email that you got from economic development office had a link to the board's agenda. Which then had like a whole nother set of links, which is what supervisor piece of code says. Yeah.
This is not our board agenda. That's like this.
One of my favorite slides and a slideshow to staff on board agendas is how thick board packets can be when they're printed out. Because you don't realize. Okay, so, so we, we thought that it merited a proper work session with the EDA to go through the draft strategy framework. So what, what you receive by email, what you have in front of you and our copy and what I'll go through a much condensed version of in slides is not the finished document, but sort of the synthesis of all of the data analysis that the consultants have done, and then also all of the stakeholder engagement and the feedback and insights that they've sort of received. Feedback that they received and the insights that they kind of drew and gleaned from those. And so this deliverable is sort of what they call discovery insights. So kind of trying to pull all the data and the feedback together. And then showing that to you so that you can sort of see how that then sort of manifested in a draft strategy. So the, the document in front of you has a page for each of those discovery insights and then, and then goes the back half is really the strategy document. The EDA and the board both have work sessions on their agendas this week. The, the residents team also met with county leadership last week and we provided some feedback as well. And so the idea is that the feedback that we get sort of in this phase will drive sort of a fine revised strategy that then will turn into a finished plan document that will have an implementation chapter. So, so the feedback now that you provide will help us know, are we on track? Are there major changes that need to happen? Are there things that are missing or things that you don't think should be there? And then that'll start to kind of like drive the next phase of work from the consultants. So we're expecting to have a draft strategic plan document from them by the end of June. And then you all have a joint meeting with the board supervisors on August the 13th. But I know some of you will be virtual for, and that'll be the meeting where the board will have the option to take action on adopting that plan. So that's sort of where we're at in the process and, and what today's about. If folks have questions or big comments before I get into the slides, I did want to pause.
I guess the one thing I'm looking to also about this to answer is sort of depending on what people's comments, whether we want to have additional time. Feedback, whether we need to have another meeting and we can sort of have once we've gone through, we see how much people want to discuss, because we could obviously talk about things now, but then if people need more time to review it. We want to give another opportunity.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to step through some slides. So they had thirteen, twelve discovery insights as part of the work that they've done. So just very briefly, and again, each of these has sort of a page of content to go with them in the full version of this document. There are a ton of strengths in Albemarle County. When you talk about asset based design and strategy work, we have a lot of assets that you're really proud of. We heard a lot from folks about a desire to balance the tax base or diversify the tax base. The commercial tax base takes reliance away from residential and grow the commercial industrial sector. The next three are really responding to the cluster analysis, which is the, the new way to say target industries. And the previous economic or the current economic development strategic plan has seven target industries. They analyze six as part of their work. And really the discovery insights here are sort of laying out that these three biotech life sciences, intelligence, national security, food processing and agribusiness are the three that they're recommending that we focus on in this plan. A more targeted approach helps us just be a little bit more strategic with resources. And there's a lot of good data and, and again, asset driven reasons why these are the three that they're recommending. The next one is about infrastructure. They have this identified as land planning. I would say it's really the, the, the land development process that the county is responsible for as being an opportunity to update and refine to help better meet business needs. There's a, there's a great spirit of entrepreneurship in Albemarle. When you talk to folks from around the country, there's a lot of places where economic developers are focused on just getting people to think about starting their own small business, trying something on their own. And that's not a challenge that we have here in Albemarle. There's a lot of, there's a lot of great examples of entrepreneurship in action. And so scaling those businesses is really the next area for us to focus on. We have a ton of talent. And again, when you talk to folks across the Commonwealth in the country, a lot of economic developers talk about how they don't have people. You know, you think about Southwest Virginia and other manufacturing cores where they're seeing population decrease. That's not, that's not a challenge we have here. And we actually have a pipeline of youth who move here for college. And then often are moving on to somewhere else. And so what would it look like to retain more of that talent here? UVA and PBCC are powerful anchors that can really help us on workforce development areas. We also have a really strong workforce system. There's a ton of organizations that work in that space and have a lot to offer. What we're, they sort of self acknowledge that they often are working in silos and we think with a more focused cluster approach. That then gives us an opportunity to focus on building those career pipeline pathways where you can really have a workforce system that's oriented towards the, the sectors that you have jobs in. And so you're opening up career pathways to folks at all levels. Good segue into access gaps persist. And so again, having an aligned workforce development system really opens up opportunities to bring everybody in the county, you know, to see themselves in the jobs that we'll have here in the future. The last one is really about marketing and branding. We have, we're full of promise, but we don't do it a good enough job telling our story. We heard a couple of times during the stakeholder engagement in different ways, but to paraphrase, the thought was Albemarle County is a place that people talk about living and playing in. And it's not a place where we talk about working in. And so what would it look like to think about this place is a great place to do business and to grow your career? So I talked about the three sectors that they're recommending that we focus on. This is some of the data and the assets that, that sort of back up that, that recommendation for focus. And then this is a vision, a draft vision statement. So Albemarle County is rooted in innovation, open for investment, a destination for entrepreneurs, makers, growers, thinkers. Where bold ideas take root, businesses scale, partnerships thrive, leading the way in Virginia's next innovation economy. These are the five goals. I like to think of the top three or the three across the top as really the, the cluster goals. So really focusing in on intelligence, national security, innovation, biotech life sciences, innovation, a modern agribusiness economy. And then the bottom two are really more about the infrastructure, the economic development infrastructure in the broadest sense. Goal four is really focused on talent and entrepreneurship, scaling businesses and workforce development so that our folks are successful candidates in the jobs of the future. And then the final one is really about being what they're calling investment ready. So a lot of focus on the development process, county policy and codes, that kind of thing. And so for each of these, there are a handful of strategies that would go under them. And you can see they kind of cross. Some of these are workforce related. Some of these are convening, get, get the folks in the intelligence and national security sector together, talking to each other, talking to the county on a periodic basis. Storytelling is the last one. You know, how can we, how can we make Albemarle synonymous with intelligence, national security in, in, in the mid Atlantic? You know, the first two there are Renata Futures and the Innovation Corridor. And so some of this stuff is stuff that we're, that we're already working on and seeking to grow those opportunities there. On the biotech and life sciences side, a lot of similar ideas. So the new things on this one are really focusing on infrastructure for scale up and commercialization. So the EDA recently supported the Commonwealth Bio Accelerator Project that you see the Bio Hub is operating at North Fork. That is, that's one really important piece of that business growth cycle in the biotech sector. Where those companies will land next is, is, is the next challenge on the horizon. When you think about the types of biotech companies that we have in our community, a lot of them are startups. And then, you know, they grow to maybe five people on the team. And then as they move to 10 to 50 people on the team, they're still very small. And, and they're, you know, sort of rapidly trying to grow the commercialization pathway for the, the R and D that they're doing. And they don't have the capital or the time to build a building. So if there's not wet lab space for them to move into, their opportunities here can be a little limited if we don't have a building product that's available for their needs. And so that's sort of the thought behind that one. Continue work with regional partnerships. Leverage the work that Seville Bio Hub is leading on the Bio Bridge Grant that the county is participating in on workforce. Business attraction work in the biotech space. So what is, what is the county and how are we supporting others going into trade shows, conferences, et cetera, to grow the awareness of opportunities here and then growth capital. Goal three on the agribusiness side. One of the things that we heard from all of the stakeholder groups that we convened was challenges with the land use and zoning policies that, that can make it hard for them to be successful as they look at adapting their business. And one piece feedback that we got from the agribusiness roundtable was this idea that the modern agribusiness has light industrial type needs that you cannot do in the rural area where agribusinesses are located. And so that creates a challenge. And so that first one is really a recommendation to dig into that a little bit more. Support some of the infrastructure needs of agribusiness, food processing facilities, co packing facilities, broadband, cold storage, things that they need to be successful. The getting the, the agribusinesses talking to each other was, was sort of what's behind number three and four and five really. They have a lot of common challenges that manifest a little bit differently. So if it looks a little bit different, if you're a turkey producer versus fruit producer, producer. But the, the base challenge might be the same. And so finding ways to continue to connect those groups together and with the county and other ecosystem partners to help them open up wholesale opportunities and sort of overcome some of those challenges.
Yeah, well, you might ask a question.
And I'm talking about this one in particular, but it kind of delves into the national security as well. Does UVA and PBCC have, I don't know this, have like cyber courses? Because if, for example, right? Because if you look at Colorado Springs, that's kind of what they did. So we have an ability, you know, to train people to a degree, at least you get a college degree in cyber. There's a lot of universities have that now. In the same thing with, you know, kind of biotech. I mean, I don't know if, is, is UVA kind of spring loaded around these goals to kind of, you know, at least have a chunk of their curriculum or their course offerings focused on that?
Yeah, so it's a great question. And I would say on the biotech side, yes, and that's probably why we have, I mean, that's there's sort of a through line from UVA's academic coursework to the startup community that we have here. On the intel national security side, there's, there's pieces of UVA that are connected in with the work that they do at Urbana Station. But from a, from an academic program side, that's, that's probably a future opportunity.
Yeah, PBCC does have a cybersecurity certificate.
It's what I thought, but I don't know if UVA does.
I know, that's something we could, we could double check.
Yeah, that might be, I mean, it's just, just a thought.
Yeah, so the, the Bio Bridge Grant that, that this group has supported on the biotech side is really starting that getting K-12, K-Tech, PBCC, UVA from across different schools within the university. Employers in the biotech space, the localities, every, getting everybody in the same room together and working on a, with a consultant to work on what are the gaps in that ecosystem? Where are we aligning and where are we, where are we misaligned on what the needs are? And the goal is, you know, the study will identify all the gaps. The next step would be then to, to start to fill them. And the idea is that we would, we're going to learn so much in the process of doing that for the biotech sector. And that we could then apply that same method to some of the other sectors that we're focused on. So intel, national security folks have said that we need to do this for that sector too.
Yeah, you know, obviously if we want to keep young college graduates here, you have to have things that would support those goals.
Absolutely.
UVA does have a cyber innovation.
And they have a national security data and policy institute that they launched last fall.
I'm very well aware of that, but that's not exactly.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, you, I noticed that you keep mentioning turkey farms. How many do we have?
We have one turkey farm.
Okay, they are the only USDA licensed facility for dry aged turkeys from the Kelly Bronze brand of the UK.
Dry what?
Dry, dry aged turkeys.
It's like the Kelly Bronze. Like they do for steaks.
It's a really elite.
Holy smoke.
Let it sit around.
So we have one, but you keep mentioning turkey farms, which I have no problem with the, you know, $200 turkey and like what you said in the turkey farm. But you're not mentioning the wineries. We have a lot more wineries.
Yes, you're right. You're right.
For sure.
It's washed out the turkey.
And you need that wine to wash down the turkey.
Yes, good point.
Okay, so that I. Because before joining the EDA, I didn't even know we had a turkey farm.
Me neither.
Nice to visit. I've been there multiple times. So, well, I do have, I don't know why, I guess, oh, so it spurred, spurred all these questions, but in terms of the infrastructure. Is it mostly like on the locations where the businesses are located? Or is it, you know, we need to find a spot where we can build something that everyone works together or is it both?
It's both. Yeah, it's both. There's food packing and, and that, you know, there's, that's dry packing and then there's beverage filling facilities. Those, those often make sense on more of a shared contract type basis. And then there's some things that somebody just needs onsite for their, for their, for their business.
And have we identified places in the county where these could go?
Not at this point. So this, this is really setting up the, are these the right things for us to then dive into at this, at this stage? This plan wouldn't, when this plan is adopted in August, it wouldn't have solved, it wouldn't have found all those locations and solved that challenge. It would be, that's the work of the next couple of years for us to work through that.
Can we?
So the implementation plan would have kind of a, you know, this, this activity would take this much time and this activity, you know, should wait a couple of years before it gets started.
Like watching grass grow.
The last one, the last one on this one is really just supporting the agritourism economy. Tourism is a major sector in the community, the winery industry, the wine industry, there's a the pick your own farms are all sort of part of that puzzle as well as our recreational assets. And so the work partnering.
Because you just said, then you start this discussion off by saying Albemarle County is a great place to come and play and do things. That's what that talks to. But how do we get them to stay?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, I think, and that was sort of my question, because tourism is not like tourism as a big category is not one of the things we're focusing on. And I guess one of the things would be we're, we're doing a good job of that, but that's not one of the people pushing, I guess.
Yeah, the, the thought there was, let's focus on the traded sector piece of the tourism industry. So agri, agribusiness includes to Curly's point, the wineries, which are a major driver of economic activity in that region. You all also recently supported and it currently in the early start stages of getting underway is the implementation grant that Nelson County is spearheading for the region on the planning grant that they did, which uncovered that there's, you know, with the equipment and the grapes that we have already in Albemarle County, there's more capacity to, to bottle and sell wine than we currently do. And that's because of access to markets. So most of the wineries are selling out of their tasting rooms and through their wine clubs. And wholesaling is an opportunity, better access into markets is a huge opportunity for the wineries to, without expanding their physical footprint, be able to export out of Albemarle County much more product than they presently do. And then there's also opportunities for business stream diversification. So and sort of implicit in 3.1 is also this idea that modern agribusinesses need to have a couple of different lines of, of revenue streams. And so if you think about, I like to think about King Family, which has the, the grapes and the wine business, but they also have an event space where they do, where they host weddings and private events. They have the polo matches, which bring, which bring a lot of folks onto their property, which gives them opportunities to sell their, their wine. And, you know, they do other events also throughout the course of the year. And so they've got a couple of different sort of lines of, of effort open and we heard from the agribusinesses that that's another area where some additional flexibility in our codes would help them be able to keep the, keep the farm agriculture working by having some other revenue streams to diversify their, their business.
Are we saying anywhere that the county's codes or their their ordinances and zoning is really not helping businesses? Because that's, that's also what I'm hearing is everything takes so long.
So one of the later goals.
Okay, okay, okay. And the reason why I brought up this other stuff is y'all need to know, which I think you're all aware of, but we're going to get, have two new board members come January. And depending on who's, and I looks like great candidates and everything, you never know what the future is going to bring. They can undo a lot of this stuff. Because if you get, you know, board members in that say, hey, you know, we don't want expanded business and we actually have people saying, can you stop people from moving in? So there are a lot of opinions out there. I, I've gotten that numerous times. So that worries me that if the slow process, I'd rather like get something in there that we can hold people's, hold people accountable to. And I'm talking about the board supervisors.
And that message that, I mean, there's always been that population for the 25 years I've lived here. This has said, basically, can we, can we, you know, pull the drawbridge up and not, and stop people from coming? And that, that population's always there. It's just at certain times they seem to be louder than.
My croze now.
No, 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 no.
That's tongue in cheek. All right, Don.
But, but, but let's, let's talk just, if you go back, I had one thing on 3.6 and this sort of touches on Croze a little bit. But, but it's, but, but we hear it anywhere, these places want to do events, right? The board has, has been through this any number of times with how loud can it be? What's, you know, the measurement from, from the from the edge of the property and the decibels when you talk about having events. But the other piece is, is the lodging piece, right? That's yeah. And I don't know that Croze is zoned properly and, but, but it feels, and from everything that I've heard from people in the wine business that a lodging opportunity in Croze would be, would do gangbusters. Certainly six months of the year, probably nine months of the year, especially if you build in you know, one, looking out to the western part of the county, but also down to Nelson, but two, turning around and looking back toward Charlottesville and the university for events this past weekend, for example. Six or seven weekends a year for football, if they do what they're supposed to do in terms of you know, helping drive some, some income and revenue toward the county as well. But again, that gets back to 3.1 with, you know, is the land use in Croze? And in the growth area of Croze in particular, being optimized for that type of development and growth.
Well, I do know that, I mean, a hotel was supposed to be part of downtown Croze development, but I'm not sure. It's been a while since I've seen.
Yeah, it's still in there.
It's still in there.
Yeah, and, and there was one proposed as part of the Albemarle Business Camps too. And the, the, the back sort of.
I don't remember.
I'm not sure.
I feel like there was there were multiple iterations.
Okay, okay.
So at one point there was talk about a town. But, but anyway, trying to to show that, get that, get that piece, that lodging piece. But again, you can't as of right now, the growth area being limited. as of right now, the growth area being limited, right? What does rural lodging to support these things look like? Whether, um, I'm thinking about Nelson County now and Veritas having the farmhouse there that they have where you can stay onsite. Right? Those types of things, you know, would, would those be some of those additional um, revenue streams? That the wineries could use, could King Family have cottages now, that sort of thing?
And maybe part of our economic development strategy should be flexibility uh, within our zoning and codes and everything, because our county is so so many different parts and, and something may not fit over here, but it may fit over here. And this is the rural area, so it may not fit there, but in this rural area, it would fit, it makes sense. Is, I, I just, I really truly believe that we need flexibility, because it's too much like, nope, can't do it, there's a line, you can't do it. And, and that kind of thing drives me crazy personally, but.
I, I think about the, uh, the shadow lanes at off of sixty-four. And I turn left, if I'm headed eastbound and I go under sixty-four, and I'm in Pantops, and that's a growth area. And I turn immediately right, even though there's a hotel and a couple of businesses, I'm in rural. And I get, right, you, you have to have a hard line somewhere.
Right.
Sometimes I wonder, you know.
I know, that's my, it's like, I, I, I do, I do agree with God to look at that, a smaller area, but that's reality. And, and I think that's why I say flexibility. Uh, you know, it may, something, a business may want to be there, that may not work out, but then another business may work out. If we don't have flexibility or come before the board of supervisors or a special use permit, um, but have the staff look to say, hey, that, that would actually be a good location in that area. But where do we say that? That would help economically.
Yeah.
We do say that.
We, yeah, when we get to goal five.
Oh.
Yeah, that's in goal five.
Never mind.
Yep. Any other agro business?
Oh, and restaurants too.
Our, um, our consultants had so much fun spending, they started the day with the Intel National Security Crowd and they ended the day, uh, you know, twelve hours of meetings. They ended the day with the agribusiness community and it was riveting the whole, the whole day through. Um, so goal four is about talent and entrepreneurs staying, scaling and succeeding. Um, the, um, the items on here are really, um, trying to get at that, um, aligned workforce development system. And also, um, one of the demographic findings that is just fascinating, um, if you are into, if you, if you find that type of thing fascinating, um, is that based on the number of eighteen to twenty-four year olds we have in our community, and based on the number of fifty-five and plus year olds in our community, you would expect there to be more twenty-five to fifty-five, fifty-four year olds than there actually are. Um, and what you have is you have, give a, a lot of youth at the university and you, um, have a lot of folks who years ago had a great time at the university and decided that they wanted to retire here. Um, and, um, but in the middle, they went somewhere else, um, and they lived their career, they had their career, they built their family somewhere else. Um, and so the first couple on here are really trying to get at, um, what economic developers call stickiness. Which is that we have folks, um, graduating from our high schools, um, and PBCC and UVA every year. Um, and what would it look like for them to stay here and be able to make Albemarle a really good choice for them? Um, and there's implicit in that, um, you know, looking at wages and cost of living, um, but also fun and connection. And that's what the first three on here are really about, um, how do you, how do you make sure that UVA and PBCC students know that they have good options here? Um, how do you, um, help them build a social network here, the, with the, uh, working with the chamber on the unprofessional network? Um, and then, um, number three, some folks will kind of raise an eyebrow at, um, part of the competitive benchmark analysis work that the consultants did, they looked at, um, they compared us to ten, um, university towns, counties that have, um, one of our target sectors as well. Um, and looked at a, a lot of different demographic features and lifestyle features. Um, and we ranked high on restaurants, so I want to, I want to recognize we ranked high on restaurants, um, and we ranked high on, um, outdoor rec. Um, but nightlife, so national touring concerts and clubs and those types of things. Uh, we actually were towards the bottom of the list on that, and so.
To that.
And so that's what that one is.
Well, and that is actually.
Nothing here.
One of the issues that I brought up, when we, when we saw the session is that we are in a somewhat Virginia being the way we're set up and the fact that the city is in the middle and we're surrounding them and a lot of that stuff is here, you know, some of the comparison isn't as accurate, because the center being cut out of.
This, the, the lifestyle, for the, for the lifestyle ones, it, it was for the metro, so that, yeah, so, yeah.
All right.
So we, we, we get the cities. Unfortunately, not a ton of them.
I, I, I am a little perplexed by experiential retail, like, I mean, is that sort of a downtown mall, if the common?
That is, uh, I don't know how much time you spend on TikTok or Instagram, Director's Door.
On Instagram.
That, that's the, that's, that's the, the store with the climbing wall, that's the, um.
Just lost out.
The yoga studio, the, 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 the yoga shop that also has classes and go snuggle yoga, those types of experiences that, um, younger, younger generations are not shopping in stores, they're mostly shopping online. And so to, to get younger generations into brick and mortar, you have to draw them there with some sort of.
So, so that, so Dick's House of Sport that is opening.
Yes.
That is the type of thing with the batting cages and the driving ranges and that sort of.
Going in there?
Yes.
Did they have a district, like, I don't know, I just was there, Pearl, Pearl District, Pearl Brewing District in San Antonio. Like off.
Say more.
Off the hook, check it out, just look it up.
All right.
Yeah, it's really, it really.
So, so getting back to this then, in the entertainment options, right? The, the state allows us now to have those.
Dora.
Dora, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Yeah, basically places you can drink on the street and not have.
The block parties on the downtown mall during Tom Tom, they put up a fence kind of around the downtown mall, and that's to establish the Dora. Um, and then anywhere inside the fence, you can have an open container.
In Louisville.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they did that also in Stonefield.
They did that in Stonefield for a little while.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But not now, right?
They're trying to work with maybe businesses in Croze or Scottsville at the right time of year to be able.
Like all Croze and Dora.
Well, I mean, she's got.
That's right.
Then you're okay.
Um, and then the bottom half are, are more workforce development, so, um, again, really aligned, working with our partners to align, um, you know, what are the programs that we're offering to get folks, um, on to career paths? And are they matched up with the jobs and employment that, opportunities that we have? Um, on the entrepreneurship side, making sure that, um, all the entrepreneurial organizations in town kind of know what their thing is and what everyone else's thing is. And so there's no wrong front door to the entrepreneurial ecosystem, if you want to start a business or grow your business or scale your business. Um, and you call one of the organizations that work in that space, they would say, uh, we're not able to help you right here, but here is exactly who you need to talk to at this organization, and I'm going to, I'm going to warm hand you off to that person so that you get what you need. Um, and then this is not one, so when we talk about implementation, this is not one that Economic Development Office would, um, have a lead role in, but really, you know, recognizing that housing development and childcare initiatives are workforce challenges, there were recruitment and retention challenges. Um, and to be supportive of, of opportunities in that space. The county has a really wonderful office of housing, um, a strong housing policy, um, funding commitment by the board supervisors for, for affordable housing. And so that's not, that's not work that Economic Development Office needs to step into, um, but it's work that we can be looking for partnership opportunities, um, as we're doing other projects.
I do think there's an opportunity for the Economic Development Office to find childcare entrepreneurs, people who want to open, even if they start small. Um, and to be able to grow, and that gets also into, what does the zoning in that type of location allow, right? So that's maybe a modernization piece. But if we can encourage those entrepreneurs, right, we're doing two different, we're doing, you know, economic growth two ways, we're bringing new businesses, small businesses to the county and creating a new class of entrepreneur while answering a need for more childcare for other individuals in the county.
Right, plus you have, you know, those young adults who then get married, start having children, they know that, hey, there's someplace where I can hope my kid.
Absolutely. Um, and then the last goal, um, uh, be the most investment ready county, ready to compete, build and lead. Um, this is where we really get into those land use and codes. So a lot of, a lot of these, you know, it's one sentence, but it's, there's a lot, there's a lot that you would stack under that. Um, so modernize permitting and development process and zoning code. Um, we did specifically meet with the development community, um, actually twice, um, with the, um, through the stakeholder engagement process with the consultants. But we heard in every single session that we had, so by, you know, the Intel National Security folks, um, the Biotech Life Sciences folks, even the workforce development folks, um, talking about the challenges of, of, um, working through the county's, um, development process, even if you have, um, even for a buy right project, the timeline for review can be quite extensive. Um, um, conflicting feedback can sometimes come in, um, and it's a challenge for folks to figure out how to navigate that. And so that's an area where the county could be a real partner, um, really to all of the, um, site and building needs across the community uh, by looking at opportunities to streamline that a bit. Um, the second one is really about getting in more active dialogue with the development sector, um, to understand what those challenges are from a, from a customer standpoint, um, and seeing how the county can be a, a partner, um, in navigating that process. Um, we have a business retention and expansion program, we talk about it every EDA meeting. Um, so this is really more of a keep on, uh, working to, um, expand how we, or formalize how we do our visitation work, um, and look at strategic opportunities in that program. Um, and that's really, um, sort of a classic economic development thing, the bulk of the jobs in your community are not coming from the really exciting and fun announcements that happen, um, with the governor, um, but really from the, um, existing businesses that you have growing. Um, and so making sure that we're in good dialogue with our existing business communities, sort of the bread and butter work that we do. Um, uh, the next one is, um, an exciting one, I skipped one. Now I feel like I can't say that five point four is not exciting, it's very exciting. Uh, working with the EDA, again, this is kind of a keep doing it, you all are already looking for opportunities to have P3s, public private partnerships, um, and being the, the conduit for the county to be able to do those, keep doing that. Um, also very exciting, uh, maintaining a pipeline of sites. So you all have heard us talk about Ravenna Futures and site readiness work that we're going, that we're doing and the grant that we're going after. Um, in ten years, when Ravenna Futures is full and, and developed, um, what's next? Uh, we don't have a great, we don't have a strong answer for that right now. And so the, um, the work ahead and the, um, recruitment that we have underway right now is really, um, identifying the right person to help us advance the work of really managing a site inventory in a way that we haven't done before. Um, you know, once you have sites, then you need infrastructure, so to continue to be a good partner and work with the water, sewer and energy broadband capacity in our region. Um, and then, um, the, the last one here is sort of repeat from other slides is really talking about, um, telling our story. Um, so that Albemarle is a place again that folks think about, um, being successful.
I'm going to say something regarding modernizing, and I think that also includes flexibility, but I think the EDA, I think y'all need to come out with a strong, strong statement to the board saying these are the things that need, not everything on there, but you need to do certain things. And I think, uh, the modernization and, um, the whole zoning and everything like that and the flexibility, you need to do that or our economy will not grow.
Do you mind if I ask you, um, and this is going to be, uh, it's a risk of beating a dead horse. Uh, I, I, uh, queued Google, so approximately five percent of Albemarle County's land is, is designated developable area.
Yes.
And open for development, while the remaining ninety-five percent is designated as rural and intended for agriculture, natural resources and protection. So if I was king for day, I would make goal number one, changing that. I mean, I don't know how we do all these things with five percent of the land in this, and ma- maybe that's simplistic, I, maybe I'm missing something. But five percent, that's a lot less than ninety-five percent. And so how do we do that? I mean, just, uh, somebody explain to me, uh, do you guys all, did you guys all know that? Only five of them? I have no idea, but I'm like.
We have seven hundred and forty. About thirty, about forty is the five percent, yeah, six hundred and ninety.
Percentage of that is developable, so.
Yeah, we're all fighting over all that, and how much of it is already developed? How much is UVA already owned?
Well, right, that's.
So I'm like, you know, UVA is, it's great, it's a blessing and a curse, because it, it owns so much land. And it's like, how much of the five percent is already taken?
Right.
I mean, there is room in the development area, but I do think the board, for the first time that I'm hearing in five years, is that we, we may be this is being taped. Ed watched, okay, um, I mean, there might be opportunities to look at certain areas, we were even talking about like switching, okay, this develop, uh, five acres development area here for a five acres rural area, because it fits better here, doing things like that. But just trying to be creative, trying to say what makes sense. Because in some of our development areas, if it's along a river, like I think, uh, Superintendent Galloway mentions, along a river, that's not going to be developable, because you have, you have to be so many feet from the stream and everything like that. So, eh, we might start looking at things twenty-nine north, um, I think that's, and that's my area, but I mean, that in the future, um, I think that's where we're going to see a lot of the growth. I think the board is more receptive than I've ever seen it before.
See, absent that, I just don't know how we're going to get from point A to point B, I really don't. All these things are great, but until you have enough property to do these things.
There's, there's quite a bit left, yeah.
There's, there's a way.
Okay.
Um, so this is just, um, this is, I'm wrapping up now, so this is, um, some of the big picture metrics, so in the full report that you absolutely read, um, coming into here, you know, that each, each goal has some metrics that they would, uh, identified to go with them. But these are sort of the big picture goals, um, so business expansion measured by ju- growth in jobs, companies and investment in the sectors that we've identified. Um, growing that twenty-five to forty-four year old working age population, so filling out that donut, um, back in. Um, and then looking at the commercial tax base growth, so which is, um, really helping me look at diversification, um, the tax base. Um, so we are, uh, tomorrow having the boardwork session, um, that is on the agenda for two fifteen, I think. Um, and, um, uh, and then, um, we'll work, sort of, take all the feedback that we're getting this week and last week, uh, work to refine the strategy and then, um, develop a plan document, um, that, uh, again, you will see on August the thirteenth. But we can have, um, lots of conversations between now and then, so this is not the last time that we get to talk about this, um, for sure. Um, and that is all I have on this topic, so turn it back to, to your law.
So other comments, other things people want to talk about?
Yeah. Oh, uh, but.
All right.
You're up.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think everybody's head is in the same place in terms of keying in on this growth potential, and how do we get coordinated maybe, and what does that all mean logistically, right? Implementation, we have a lot of goals, we have, um, sort of, I guess we'll get action. I guess that was my question, there will be some kind of action plan, probably as general actions, but right, for your military guy, everything's in logistics, right? It's how we execute, right? How, exactly, how, how do you get it done? But I was curious about, I know the county has done previous versions of build out analysis and things like that for maybe various type of land uses and whatnot. So I was curious into, to supervisor's or supervisor's point about being creative and flexible rather than drawing hard lines. Um, except the one, that's a good one. Um, but anyway. But anyway, you know, how, there, there's definitely potential there. I'm curious about. And there's, there are a lot of detailed questions that we can follow up with later, but I think, um. Those comments point in the direction, you know, some of the recommendations point in a direction that has to be looked at. It needs to be done very sensitively in context of our community goals and values, right? Because that's where it's gonna get twisted up. So if we can have a sensitive, uh, and thoughtful approach. A informed approach, a data driven approach, I think we can accomplish this. And maybe it's. May- maybe it's to your point about appropriate land uses in different character areas or regions or, you know, zones. Because certainly, uh, we can accomplish a lot of this, I believe. In the context of the rural area, in the context of the rural preservation values we have and the tourism economy and all that. To help attract, you know, and keep people here for the quality and life thing, which currently we do very well. Uh, in the study, but I mean, there's, there's, I was curious about, there's market potential, right? For these various business sectors, market potential. Obviously drives growth, what we can capture that market potential, but then there's also. The business community's growth projections, right? What they feel that market potential is, and those might not match. And their business protect, projections are influenced by all these other factors. It might be different if they had site readiness and. All the right workforce, trained workforce, pipeline, and everything just perfect. It might match market sector, I imagine. You know, I don't know if it's less or more, but then there's community readiness, right? So if we imagine those as bubbles, different sizes. And community readiness has to do with both the, both the community being ready for this, right? And, and, and some of the points about the sensitivity, but also then the infrastructure and our zoning, our site readiness, basically. Thinking about, you know, you know, the site readiness program. So that potential to accommodate this may change and grow. Over time, as we transition to be more ready as a community and figuring this out. Anyway, those are my thoughts. I think there's a way there, but I was curious about translating market demand. The business growth projections and needs to appropriate metrics, right? Which are not all the same, and not just land, it's not just, maybe it's not just the five nine, ninety-five. It's, you know, redevelopment potential, it's, right, it's, um, there's a bunch, there's a bunch of different sort of. Land use specific metrics that translate into, uh, a program that we could then. Figure out how to implement, I guess. So that's what I'm curious about is how to train. If this study would, would define ways to do that. If that is a, an avenue to actually figure out implementation, but figure out the metrics. I mean, policy is good, but it's, it's not, you know, you know. Focused and directed because we could just, oh, we wanna create more growth area. But potentially there's, I think there's a way with the data, we have to make that a little more focused into your point. Or specifics types of uses, so it fits into the matrix of our values.
Yeah, and I think, um, the, having fewer target industries in this plan is helpful because what, um. What the bio, you know, it helps to study, like, well, what is the biotech sector need? What are their, what are, where are they experiencing struggle points and what's the government's role in helping us solve?
The growth for biotech may be adequately contained, the growth potential in North Fork, Fontaine, U V A, Health Campus. Center, whatever, wherever it all is, right? Same with the intelligence security, maybe, maybe between. N G I C and Ravenna Futures and North Fork, it's, that's enough, I don't know. Right, I, I'm just curious how the metrics, how the growth potential in market translates. To actual metrics of building square footage, types of buildings, infrastructure, transportation, land area, you know. And all that, I think that's figure outable. So that's all I have.
Other thoughts? Just to, I'd like to maybe catalyze the discussion, so, been on my mind to all these meetings. Thinking about what we're actually trying to do and, and what effects that has on population. And so it's, it's really, there's a question mark if we, so, so. We know, um, I'm not an economist, but my understanding is that. A residential tax dollars and net loss for, because the services necessary.
A dollar, a dollar thirty cost for every dollar of revenue from residential.
Thirty percent. And, and so that, that makes sense, one of the first thought tax base. I guess what I'm trying to, to wrap my head around is as we're diversifying tax base, trying to ask the commercial. Sector in the county to bear more of that burden, which makes perfect sense. What, what are we willing to tolerate and what do we want to aim for in terms of population? So I'm imagining some scenario where we invite a spark plug factor, just take a crazy example, that needs a thousand. Well, you know, we might tax that spark plug factor hands away, but then we're gonna drive a lot of population. And it could be, the net, the, the result of that could be a financial loss, significant financial loss. Once it was all, once everybody had arrived, uh, we had accommodated them somehow. In this, in this already very demanding housing environment. So should we, should we be thinking about economic development? In ways that increases gross regional product without having significant population impacts? So, and on the other side of the spark plug factor, I'm imagining, maybe it's a, um. I, I, I'm imagining ten researchers in a building that, um. Because of, of how sophisticated their, their product is, um. You know, it's, or maybe it's a research kind of thing, whether selling software as a service or something like that, where. Where it's a, where it sells at a very high price, the facilities therein are taxed heavily. The earnings of that relatively small group of people working there aren't taxed, um, by the state, I guess, not, yeah, at, at a high level. So, do, do you see where I'm, I'm getting with this? I just want it like, I want to, I want to catalyze the discussion right now, just about pop, what do we think about? Are we just agos? We just don't, we don't, we can't understand it, so we don't care? We can't care because we can't know, or, or, or can we, we have knowledge that we can say, yeah, we wanna focus on these. This very specified economic development because it doesn't generate the population growth. It, it really is, you know, you refer to community values, that at least my friends and neighbors. I, I don't, I don't go out of my way to tell them, I'm really looking on the development of the board, because the first thing they think of is, is traffic. It's more building, it's like, oh God, what are you doing, Jeff? And then, I, I've got to explain. After some considerable effort, you know, furrows in the brow, going away for people, but, but I guess I'm, I'm trying to. I wanna make sure that we, that, that our efforts here are keeping, keeping, keeping. All the moral, the way all the moral citizens want it to be. They're not looking for a lot, a lot of population growth, a lot of development. So, but, sorry, so I'm just not talking. If anybody, I'd love to hear, because these have been on my mind, I'm just interested to see with all these bright people here to hear comments about.
We are looking at data centers. Different sized data center, probably not the high, what are they called? High, hyperscale, we're not looking at that, but you know, there's, we already have some of them, right? There's smaller ones already in the county, so maybe a little bit larger, maybe a medium size in certain locations. Very few employees, but a nice amount of revenue. But, believe me, that's gonna get pushed back from certain groups. You know, and Albemarle, because it's, I mean, we have these competing interests and everything. But that, that is something that we're looking at, which ties into what you're saying as far as. Good revenue, but for the county, but then not a lot of, uh, employees and everything. But really, the average Joe, if you ask him, do you want a data center? They're gonna say no.
So there's the cost of service, um, uh, report is being reviewed tomorrow with the board. It's a pretty interesting report. On a data center, I think the rule of thumb is for every dollar of revenue, seven cents is the cost of. Infrastructure. To give you a, I mean, that's the spectrum, residential, thirty percent more cost than revenues. A data center is probably. The least amount of cost per revenue, you know, and so we're, to your point, what's, what's, you know. What's the, the, the target that we're, that we're looking for?
Yeah, we have the sweet spot, it's a little off the sweet spot, so you have the water.
We've actually addressed that, we said if you use water, then you have to use recycled water. And then they have some of them that use air, airflow, airflow, I think. Air cool, air cool, okay. But, um, also like if it's water, it has to be recycled water. So we put parameters on there, we put parameters regarding the size, but we will be looking at that, that'll be very interesting.
Thinking about it, excuse me, just from the population piece. I, I go back to Emily's point that they're here for school and they're here when they retire. Right, that bump is coming, fifty-five plus, they're gonna come, they're gonna, you know, buy a. Two acre plot out in, just outside the growth area in Prozac, and that's their retirement homes.
U V A Letterman shirt, jackets.
Oh, absolutely, all the, all the stuff, right? To be, well, I have, I have classmates and friends who are doing just that right now, tacky, right? They're just off one fifty-one. Um, they bought a two acre, bought their building, their retirement home, is leaving New York City and coming back. They are coming. If we're not designing and looking for. The people who are coming to work here to generate that commercial revenue. We're gonna be taxed more on the residential fees. And I understand that you're trying to find the solution. But, but at this point, I don't know that we can be as selective as we want to be. Because we know the residents are coming. We know U V A is also going to try and house more of their students on ground, which is a good thing. It does open up some. Housing in the greater community. But if we can get some, maybe some more of, and this gets back to housing policy, it's more of the missing middle of housing. So less single family, more. Attached, over, under attached, or, or multifamily in some way. So it's denser, so you don't have to run your services as far. And trust me, I sit on the Schools Long Range Planning Committee and we're looking at the same base. Do we need a new comprehensive school, high school? Where would we put that in the county? How much is that going to cost the county? You know, a comprehensive high school with everything that goes with it, probably these days, it's one seventy-five, I'd say. One fifty, um, Montgomery County, Maryland did one just before the pandemic. They replaced the one I went to and it was one sixty up there, six years ago. And they had to leave. They basically built it on the site and then toured down and put the, the fields where the old building was. So, so we know that some of these people are coming anyway. It's trying to, to steer it and, and population growth. And I think, I think Bill mentioned it and Supervisor will pretty still currently mention it, there's room in the growth area for a lot still. And, and we're not seeing, um, at the edges of the development area in particular. The densities that they are zoned for sometimes in terms of the housing projects that come through. So we're not making the best use of it. I'm thinking about, um. Esau, out at Fashion Square Mall. That's a, a great service for the county. But when Home Depot opens and businesses wanna be on that property. Is that the best use for Albemarle County of that space? Esau's the right phrase, right?
Yeah, you got it.
This is, my wife's in the, on the inside, so.
We were talking about that acronym this morning, about how the cool kids say.
What is it?
Public Safety Operations Center.
But it's, all right, it's the old, it's the old J C Penney stuff. And, and when, when Home Depot opens and the traffic that it's going to be driven to that spot and. Belt will benefit. And whatever else Home Depot decides to do with that property will benefit. And when that's growing and developing. How can we, you know, the county would have to find a place to hide, but, but it's one of those things that we're not, I've gone so far afield. From your population piece at this point, I apologize for that, but, um, I worry that. That if we're too picky with the businesses we pursue. That the residential tax piece will become unsustainable for many. Here and it will lead them to sell and move to Nelson or Fluvan or Louisa. And add to the traffic and add to the pollution.
So I imagine, in this study, recommends focused on three sectors. Even when I look at those sectors, my lameness understanding of those. They, they look to address, some agribusiness, but we're talking about automated agribusiness, not. Right, not like super farms. Everything, everything in agriculture, okay.
Yeah, I mean.
So that's the only, I don't know, but again, metrics, right? What does this actually mean? How does it translate? There's points about, just like Jeff's point about, how does that drive housing demand? Obviously, housing demand and infrastructure. Or housing availability. Based on the types of income levels we're growing, right? There is an imbalance, says in the study, there's inequity, so that, that will get sort of out. You know, there's a threshold that housing creates and we're only able to feed that pipeline so fast, right? So that is a limiting factor, but what I'm seeing here are not industries that drive massive. Workforce booms. They are moderate to low workforce. Booms because the technology and the workforce, uh, and their higher income paying jobs. And I imagine there's spinoffs and other support industries that accommodate the other percent of Albemarle County and, and the area that's not. You know, didn't go to U V A, you know, whatever degree, right? Uh, what's it, forty, sixty percent of us are college educated or whatever, I don't know, anyway. I know a lot of people very advanced degrees and also don't, you know. Lower sector jobs too, you know, it's just the way it is, so that, that doesn't mean much, but, um.
That the consultants actually talked about, it, you know, it'd be great once we got the plan to do an offsite. E D A to talk about, you know, what, how do you all see yourselves? Focusing on, you know, you're, I'm not, my team's not gonna do everything on that list. Uh, there's other partners that we'll work with on that. Uh, but you all have a role to play too. Uh, but you all have a role to play too, um, and can drive sort of where the focuses are. Um, and so that's, that's an area where EDAs sometimes do play a role in saying, you know, this is a strategic location. And so we want to, we want to put out there that this is an area where we're looking for, for partners on. Um, to try to drive that type of outcome. And so that, that's, that's an area of work that the EDA could. Could look at and, you know, an example of how we would do that within the context of the comprehensive plan. Would be to say, you know, let's take a, uh, the Broadway Blueprint Study or the small area, the Rio twenty-nine Small Area Plan or another one of the. Uh, master plans. Uh, and really look at what does it say about employment and commercials and light industrial sectors in that plan? And let's go after it, you know, how do we, how do we light the sparks to get those, uh, those vision projects implemented? And that, that's an area where, um, where we could, it's not work that the EDA has focused heavily on, but that's an area. Where, um, where some EDAs do, do a lot of, uh, of work.
So to kind of go back to your original question about population, I mean, I don't think about it specifically about. The population growth. What I, I think a lot of the pushback, this is sort of my view is that. What people don't want us to turn into is Fairfax County. You know, you don't want to drive from here to, to Crozay. Uh, and just go through subdivision after subdivision after subdivision. And, you know, we want the, the rural landscape that we have. And I think what we're talking about is how do you keep that? But still get the stuff that, that we want. And I think the, you know, this, this ninety-five, five line. You know, does it need to be a softer line? Is there, there graduation? I think the problem that we've got right now is that the way we're, we're operating. Is that the people that, one of the reasons that people come to town after having worked in New York is they can come down here and they can buy fifty acres. Or twenty acres or whatever and they live. And I mean, what you do see is under our current structure. You do drive out and you see development and development and development, and these are these buy, ride or. Developments that are happening anywhere. So I think what we need to be, sort of the two things that I, I feel are important is one, we need to have intensity. Higher so that we can focus, we can get people in here. It's not as expensive, hopefully. And, and then, yeah, I mean, it's still going to be expensive, but at least we're not sprawling everywhere. And we can still keep those rural views that everyone likes and enjoys. And then I think the, on the, on the job side, and I do feel like it's important. That, you know, we have those opportunities that not everybody in Alamo County needs to be a rich person who's, who's moving. Need to have it top to bottom. I mean, there are all sorts of bad things that potentially difficult issues. I mean, one of the things that. That I've heard people talking about is. Root is, is driving at the costs of, you know, fossil fuels and all those things. Well. It's fine if we say, yeah, the people in Alamo County don't have to drive, but if there are no, no way for anybody to live here who do the jobs, they're all driving from other places. We need to support, support those folks. And I, I think it is. It is important to not lift the drawbridge of the. I've lived here for six years now, so I'm still not a native, but. I think it's important for people to be able to come to town and to move and to not have to run up here and to feel like they can come in to the lower level. And I, I, I'm very sympathetic to the comments about needing to have that network of people. When I got my job for law school. It was hard to find people to hang out with and to do things with, that, that. The building up that, I, the, the sticky comment they made that you gotta have things to be able to get involved with and, and pull people in. And that's what holds them. If you don't have any connections, I mean, we've, we lose lawyers who are like, you know, don't work here, but they don't sort of make those connections. And it's easy to pick up and just move to DC where there's more stuff. So I, I think the targeted sectors, I, well, or whatever clusters now, I mean, I do think that they sort of. Are a bigger hit in terms of the, the. You know, higher income, higher producing, less, less likely to. More organic growth from the people that we already have here than bringing a bunch of other people in. Although I suspect that. The spark plug factor probably regenerate more tax revenues, because it's a machine or anything. Taxes and things like that. So, and I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know if this is coming out of the study you were talking about, but you know, how does an apartment compare in terms of revenue? Tax revenue that gets generated to a, you know, residential. Is that, is that considered? I guess that's commercial, isn't it? Or how does it break out?
Yeah, so that's a debate that the, um, the CFO was here. He could say that that is a debate in the, in the finance field. Um, because, uh, and it's actually in the, the state mandated reporting that localities have to do, multifamily is its own section. Um, because it's both, um, you know, it's for the owner of the property, it's an income generating. Um, asset, and so it's commercial. Um, but when you think about demand for services, that, you know, the, it, it really, from a locality standpoint, it really feels more like residential. Um, and so you can, you can put it in either bucket if you're thinking about, you know. Where, where do we fit this into the, the, the mix of a balanced tax base? But, um, but we, for, um, you, you know, the. You, I, I think we've shared with you all that, you know, eleven point three percent of the county's tax base right now is commercial and that's fallen. Over the past several years. In, in, when we use that statistic, multifamily is in, is we have put it into the residential bucket. In recognition of, um, those are sort of residential use dollars, um, and they demand residential type services.
Are like, those, those services have. Well, I guess just to wrap up the population part that I'll, you know, the fours, I, I, I'm advocating for something, maybe it's in the vision statement. Where we, we clearly articulate that we're seeking. Like, cause I think it's like that vision statement to guide for us going forward about what's important and what's not, and I hope you can go back to it. If in my mind, it's, it's, it's increased GRP, you know, without. While minimizing population. Yeah, I'd like to see, I mean, if populated, I'm not saying that we need to call it a drop, it's a great metaphor. I, I think that we need to be conscious of, of the decisions we're making in this room and. That, that there, there could be negative tendencies of the good work.
How about balance, maximize benefits, minimize impacts, create about how they balance.
So I'm just throwing that out there for the future. Thank you, John. Sure. Appreciate the time you spent thinking about it. And I don't know, um, it's what time is it? It's five fifteen, um, I don't know what the board's view is in terms of whether we want to have. People feel like they need more time to look through this and come up with thoughts that we need to have another meeting to share those, or we are, or we can say. People can just share their thoughts with Emily and. We just go from there. We don't need to have a, I mean, obviously at the next meeting, I think it's mostly the timing aspect of it. I just want to make sure, because our next meeting wouldn't be till.
Would be June seventeenth.
June seventeenth, which is getting closer to, to, to impact. Thoughts. So I guess where we will leave it is that we will, if anyone has specific thoughts they want to share, they can. Try it to Emily and she'll pass them along. Something comes up that somebody says, we really need to all talk about this. And you have to have a special meeting, but I don't sense that that's. In case, I mean, unless something comes out of the discussion tomorrow that the board could, we really want you to. Think about this.
Yeah, yeah, something comes up, I think the board should be notified.
Yeah, so what, why, why don't I plan to do kind of a summary after the board's work session, not right after. Um, I'll, I'll plan to send you all a summary by the end of the week on the board's discussion. And then if you all want to connect back together, we can figure that out. Or if, again, if everyone wants to just send any thoughts. To me, like email that, or, you know, a coffee or a chat, um, is all, is all fine with me. Um, to share any specific feedback. Um, and then we'll be working with the consultant team over the next couple of weeks to start to really drive into. Um, a draft document that includes implementation, action type steps. And assigning roles. So again, not everything in the plan is something that's a responsibility of the ED office. Um, you know, there's, there's lots of opportunities across the organization and also the broader community for, for folks to be doing work to advance the goals that we have. Um, and we want to make sure that we're leveraging all the great resources that there are, uh, and not, you know, standing up a new program that somebody else is already doing.
And, and I think. There's obviously a lot of. I mean, that five goals of subs, you know, we call these, uh, the. Strategies or whatever. I mean, there's, there's lots of those. Obviously, we can't do everything. As you point out, some of them are taken down by other people. I also sort of see it as some of them are, are sort of contingent in the sense that. If we're making progress in one area, there may be things that we could say, okay, you know, the bio tech folks are really cracking along. We can, here's the next things we do, whereas. Maybe national security is not moving as fast. We don't have to be on all of them. So I think it's, it's a lot of things, but we don't have to be doing them all right.
Alright, so we'll send, I'll send something by the end of the week. I just, I want to do a quick time check. I can transmit this electronically or I can walk through it.
Why don't we, uh, how long do you think if you.
Give me, give me, give me an amount of time and I'll hit it.
Can you do five minutes?
I can do five minutes. Let's do it. So work session tomorrow, um, the Innovation Quarter Strategic Roadmap, that's the regional effort, um, to look at biotech, data science. Um, and IT and, um, uh, intel national security as a region, CD PED. Um, led an application to, uh, the Go Virginia program that was approved. So they, they, there will be a hundred thousand dollars from the Go Virginia program to fund that study. The EDA supported a, a substantial cash match into that. Um, I have on here the, the sixty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars in local cash match in aggregate for that project. Because we exceeded the minimum, um, which doesn't happen all that often. So you're required at a Go Virginia to have a two to one. Two state dollars, one local dollars. Um, and often we're struggling to figure out who can, who can give a little bit more to get to that minimum. Um, and so it's really exciting and I think a good show of the regional interest, um, that we were oversubscribed on that match. Um, this is just where we are on the Ravanna Future Funding Requests. Um, so the new one on here is Congressional Directed Spending at the bottom. Um, so there, uh, we put in a request to, um, the, um, federal elected officials that represent. This area on both sides, um, of Congress to, um, consider funding site readiness. Um, our Virginia Business Ready Sites Program at the state level would, would do the first fifty-five acres if it was fully funded. Um, and this one would be to do that last fifty acres if that was funded. Tell your friends. Um, this is just a fun picture. We had a site, the last part of the VBRSP grant program is a site visit. If you're, if you make it that far, if you're invited to go that far into the process. Um, and so this was just a fun selfie, um, after a long, um, a long couple of weeks of hard work to get ready. And a, just a ninety-minute, uh, rock block with, uh, with our grant reviewers, um, that I wanted to share with you all. Um, we have been at a bunch of great events over the past couple of weeks. Um, the, the PBCC, um, picture with the gentleman pointing is the Bio Bridge. Work kickoff, that's again mapping the biotech workforce development, uh, pipeline and understanding where we can fill some gaps in the system there. The, um, Ashley.
I've got two minutes, Ashley. I'm saying, uh, there, there's an improvement project, um, on Crozay Square and Oak Street improvements to, to update some of the infrastructure there. And staff has worked together with other departments, um, facilities and environmental services. And communications, public engagement to support those square businesses with some marketing supports, some radio ads, my local bags. Um, and then shop the square stickers that you see, I think at your, on your agendas. Um, it's just, it's just an example of, um, just how we're trying to support, uh, smaller businesses as these improvements occur. Okay, um, be, these are some examples of some BRE visits that occurred, um, in April. Representative McGuire. Staff requested, uh, some business visits with some of our, uh, business community. Uh, members and you see their Pro N Robotics at North Fork. Uh, with their autonomous vehicles and you see Representative McGuire chilling in the, in the autonomous van there. Um, on the lower level, that's BioCore LLC. They do injury reduction, um, engineering testing for. Um, groups like the NFL and transportation, things of that nature. Uh, so let's see, since our last meeting, we have five total BRE visits that have occurred, one in biotech, two in. IT international, um, I'm sorry, intelligence and national security and two manufacturing.
I said ten minutes, would that have gone, you'd stress it out? You know, on the, um. On the BRE visits, maybe we could do like a, uh. Year to date.
No pressure, right?
Alright, anything else? Alright, and I guess we're adjourned until two seventeen?